I call the special meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Thursday, June 16th, 2022 at 9:17 PM. We have all board members attending tonight. We have Alicia Hayes, Maya Rabasa, Kirti Hasijah Kaufman, Gordon Laffer, Michelle Shu, and Laurel O'Rourke, and myself, Judy Newman. We have, this is a special meeting, and we have one item on the agenda to approve a motion to make an offer of employment for the position of superintendent. Are there any other things to put on the agenda tonight? Gordon.
Where'd it go?
I don't know. Gordon, there you go. We're waiting for Board Member Gordon Laffer to return his screen. I don't know what happened. Did you find him?
Yes. Ta-da!
Okay, great. Thanks, Gordon.
Sorry about that. I'd like to add also a motion about adopting three equity initiatives that the Board has talked about before to adopt for future practice.
Anyone, do we have a second for that? Laurel, okay, Gordon's moved and Laurel's seconded. Can you list what the three topics are?
Yes, and this is language that all the board members have. It's that we would direct the superintendent to establish ongoing equity training for the superintendent and the cabinet by a qualified equity trainer and the Board, I'm sorry, Board and Superintendent and Cabinet, that we would have an executive coach qualified particularly in equity who would be a coach available for the superintendent and the cabinet, and that that coach's feedback could be incorporated into the Board's evaluation of the superintendent and the superintendent's evaluation of cabinet members, and that we would direct the superintendent to create an independent ombuds person position that, among other things, could accept anonymous complaints from people who have complaints about something happening in the district but didn't feel safe putting their name to it.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? If I wanted to make a friendly amendment, can I do that myself? I guess I can. I'd like to amend that we do this as an item for future action, and we have a discussion on it tonight. Because I feel like there is more, we need to understand exactly what we're passing. We should know if there are costs and what the timeframe is. Is this something we're adopting forever? For the length of a superintendent contract for one year? I just have some questions. So I would just suggest that we have a discussion tonight and maybe, and vote on it at the date certain June 22nd.
That's okay with me.
That would be my amendment. Pardon me?
That's okay, that's okay with me. I'll take it as a friendly amendment.
So the person that seconded?
We do not have discussion on that?
Well, we will when it comes up, because we'll be on the agenda for an item for future action.
I'm talking about discussion of the friendly amendment.
Oh, yeah, I think you just have to second it, and then we'll have discussion. That's, I mean, are you, the second person who seconded it, okay? Gordon accepted the friendly amendment, I believe, the person who seconded it.
I believe the whole Board has to approve a friendly amendment.
Yeah, no, we have to vote on it.
Okay.
But first, we're having the discussion. So any discussion on the friendly amendment? I think we had Maya and then Laurel.
I just want to be sure that if we are pushing it off until the 22nd, which would be our last meeting, that we have a thorough discussion so that all concerns can be brought forward on the 22nd, so we're ready to make a decision then. And I know we take minutes, but maybe in the meantime, Gordon, since this is your motion, you can take note and address them in the future meeting.
Laurel, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I proposed some of these because I, as part of my, my reason for putting somebody forward for superintendent. So I have a huge problem with this, and would like to know how to fix this in the sense that these, some of these have to be part of the contract. I will not vote for it. I will not have this as if it's not part of our contracting. That was the whole reason before we did whatever we did before, that I said I could do this.
Well, that helps, yeah, okay. And so Maya, your hand's up.
I would, I would support this motion for a resolution regardless of where we are in the superintendent search and regardless of who we put forward. I believe these are measures that should already have been in place the moment we started using words like equity. And two of them have to do with equity, and one of them has to do with our complaint process. But I personally, I would, I would be happy with coming to some conclusions tonight. But I, I believe that these should be things that 4J is doing regardless and in the name of best practices in terms of equity work.
Anyone else want to comment? And I'll come back to Laurel, her hand's up, okay? Oh, Kirti, go ahead.
I'm with Laurel. I would like to have these at least encoded in contract, and then in addition, to make sure that we are doing these for current and future as well, too. Like, I think that it's addressing both things, but I don't think they're in either equation.
Any other, oh, Michelle.
I agree. I think that we took a first step with, in the past, with anti-bias training. And this goes further to ensure that it's ongoing, that training will be ongoing, and that's what's required.
Laurel?
Oh, I think there's some confusion about what I asked for. An executive coach is specific to the superintendent I'm voting for. So this wasn't just, everybody should have an executive coach. They're very expensive, and if somebody's been a superintendent for 10 years, it's not really, it's not something that's needed, really. But because of concerns raised by the public, because of concerns that have been raised by people who I value their opinions as well, I have asked for this because I, while I have every belief this person can do this job, I also want to set them up for success and for growth. So I wanted to, that was my request. I should have been more specific in what an executive coach is. Yes, equity training, all that stuff is good, and that should always be part of the district. An executive coach is very different.
Thank you. Gordon, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thanks. I'm good with, you know, putting an executive coach into the contract. I do think that this is something that we want for, that I would want for, in terms of the equity part of executive coach, is something I would want for every superintendent and for all people at the level of the cabinet. And the same thing with the ongoing equity training, as well as for the Board and the ombuds person. I believe that what we're doing tonight is, well, I know that what we're doing tonight next is not, later is not voting on a specific contract. That language hasn't been finished, and so there's time still to work on that. We're voting on the person that we want to, that we want to offer something to contingent on agreeing on a contract. But I think mostly these are, I mean, some of these things like, you know, ongoing equity training for the Board are things that Board members have been asking for, for a long time, and that I don't think are particular to any one person. So.
So can I just make, oh, go ahead.
So I guess in that way, I mean, I'm totally happy to vote on these tonight and say, you know, the decision is made, because the language is not, you know, it's not very micromanaging, it's saying, here's three things we want. And, but I'm also okay waiting until next week, and also that will give us time to see exactly what's in the contract.
Yeah. So I think we're just at the point of saying, we're voting on the motion with the friendly amendment, and that can be, so, do you want to restate it, Gordon? We were, to vote, go on the agenda.
As you can see, I'm having a little tech problems. Are you asking me to restate just the procedural motion of where this will go on the agenda?
Yeah, we're, yes. This is going to go on the agenda to have a discussion for an item for future action. So we can, so if we do that, then we can move to our first item, which is the approval of offering a contract, and then move to this, to discuss.
I'm good with that. I just don't want to cut off discussion if there are Board members who think that we should make this an item for action.
We'll be moving this onto the agenda.
Okay, fine, then that's my, my motion is, as you said, we put this on the agenda for item for future action tonight.
Maya?
Laurel, I don't mean to speak for you, but it sounds like you would prefer to have this be on the agenda prior to the other agenda item? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay.
And I'd like to vote on it, because this is important. And while we can fine tune it, but we're deciding to, absolutely, this is part of this contracting. And that can be done tonight, per what Gordon said.
Okay.
So not for future action.
I'm confused on where we are. We had a motion, there was a friendly amendment, so we need to vote on that. And if you don't want to put it for future action, vote it down then, okay? So all those in favor of the motion as it stands, including the friendly amendment, because that's where we are, correct? Which is item for future action to be voted on on June 22nd. All those in favor of the motion as it stands that way, raise your hand. Okay, there's two people voting yes, which is myself and Alicia Hayes. All those opposed? That would be Maya, Michelle, Laurel, Kirti, and Gordon. Okay, so the motion fails.
So Judy, can I just go back? And I got convinced that this should be a motion for action. So can I make that motion that we put this on the agenda?
Go for it.
As a motion for action? That's my motion.
Okay, and we do it first on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. And Maya, so Gordon moves it, and Maya seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand. We have five yes votes, Maya, Michelle, Laurel, Kirti, and Gordon. All those opposed, same sign. We have two noes, Judy and Alicia, so the motion carries. Okay, we are now discussing the items. It might be good to discuss them one by one. I suggest we read them, since the audience doesn't have them, even though the Board members do.
I can, I can read them. If we do, the first one says, "We vote to direct the superintendent to work with Board leadership to establish ongoing equity training for the Board Superintendent and the Superintendent's Cabinet from a leading equity trainer to be selected jointly by the Board and Superintendent."
Any discussion on that? We're just gonna, well, maybe we should do one at a time, yes. Okay, so a second to that. Okay, Laurel seconds it, Gordon moves, so let's discuss that one. My question is, is this something we want to put in the contract? Or is this just something the Board's committing to? Well, that's not clear, so.
Okay, this proposal is not specific to any person's contract. It's for the Board, it's for the superintendent, it's for the Cabinet. And I know you had asked earlier about, is it forever, or is it just for a year? And I feel like it's at least for a while. I don't know, I mean, I guess until we decide it's no longer needed. I'm not quite sure how to determine that. But it's, but it's not for a specific period of time. I think we've, the idea is that to not do a one-off or a two-off, but to have a kind of ongoing, to have this as an ongoing thing.
Could I suggest a way to phrase that? Oh, that would address my time, is maybe we review the training plan annually? I mean, we might have new Board members, we might want a different trainer to do different topics, so that we have an ongoing equity training plan that the Board renews annually for what trainings we want and who the trainers are. Then I would feel like that makes a lot of sense. Okay, great. Maya?
I can agree to that, that's more reasonable. I was going to say forever and ever and ever, because as long as we're committed to equity work, this is something we need to do. And as much as I live a very optimistic life, I anticipate equity work being very long-term and lasting beyond what we even understand to be equity work currently. It will continue to shift and take different forms. So I appreciate what you said, and I would agree to that, especially because the configuration of the Board may shift.
Yeah, we might need to start over, we might have new topics, yeah. Other hands, other conversation? Laurel?
I propose we write this into policy. So, so right now is something we're deciding to do, but I think this is absolutely because of ethics, things that are, that, the, excuse me, racism and what happens in our district, and is still happening in our district, and many levels, and a lot of it just out of lack of training and awareness, I can see that. I would really love that to be part in our policy and written into policy. So I, we can start with this, and then I think we should make it part of our work next year into writing it into policy.
Other comments? Are we ready to vote on this one? Okay. So I'm going to ask you again, Gordon, with the edits that we put in there to read it. I think you've been taking notes, so we know what we're voting on, and we'll have a copy of it.
Okay. "We vote to direct the superintendent to work with Board leadership to establish ongoing equity training for the Board Superintendent and the Superintendent's Cabinet from a leading equity trainer to be selected jointly by the Board and Superintendent. This plan will be reviewed annually by the Board."
Great. And do you want to say, and we'll work towards putting it in policy?
Yeah, yes, okay. And we will work toward making this Board policy.
Okay. Any second to the motion? Okay, Gordon moves, and Kirti seconds. Any more discussion about it? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. This, this passes unanimously with all seven Board votes. Okay, let's go to number two.
Okay, here's number two. "We direct the superintendent to hire an executive coach or advisor who specializes in equity work and who will be available to work with the superintendent and each member of the Superintendent's Cabinet. The coach will provide feedback to the Board that may be incorporated into the Superintendent's evaluation and feedback to the superintendent that may be incorporated into the evaluation of cabinet-level staff." So that's the, and I would just say, I mean, if I could take 30 seconds more, I believe that all of the top, the President and all of the top, or each of the top leaders at the UVO have an equity coach. So if we want to put that in as something that, like, specific to the superintendent, that the superintendent is able to have that, I would be, I would certainly be good with that.
So let's have, we need a second, first of all, that was the, and then we can discuss it and change it. So Gordon's moved, and Maya, are you seconding it? Okay, great. All right, Laurel, go ahead.
An executive coach and an equity coach are not, I don't want to make those interchangeable. I think we could have both. If there's one person who does everything, okay, amazing, great. But usually people specialize. And so I would, I'd rather have this separated into two. Either we decide on both right now, or it's two different motions. And I'm not, I'm not set on what that is.
Maya's hand's been up. I don't know if Maya, you had, and then Gordon.
Yeah, I, my comment precedes Laurel, so it's not in response, per se. I was just going to ask that the language in Gordon's wording move from, I think he said maybe, and I would like it to be will be in terms of will be used for evaluation or incorporated into their evaluations. I would like that to be something that we hold ourselves accountable to doing, and.
Gordon, you had your hand up next, I think.
Like I have, my fingers got fatter over the week or something. I guess I wanted to hear more from Laurel on the, on the split, because I heard you say that you thought somebody who's a new superintendent could use an executive coach, and then maybe everybody could use an equity coach, and those could be the same things, but not, not, we shouldn't assume that they're the same things. And if that's, if that's true, then from my point of view, I would be happy to have this thing, as we have here, being the equity coach that's for everybody, and then right into the superintendent that they get an executive coach. Right, I'm right into, I don't really care if it's a resolution, but that seems to me that it could be in a contract, if we're saying somebody who's new coming into a superintendency should have an executive coach, if that's what the Board thinks, I would certainly be fine. You know, specifying each thing. But I wanted to hear if that's what you were thinking, or if that's what other people are thinking.
I like that, I like that. That's, that's definitely, and I was going to add that by equity coach answering to the, not answering to, but informing on the evaluation, yes. I don't necessarily think of that for the executive coach. That needs to be a relationship where trust can be built and not punitive, per se. So, because that's where the best learning comes from, right? Not thinking, if I don't say the right word right now, you're going to get me. So that, I wanted to clarify that, but I also, like, the equity coach can inform the Board of the work that still needs to happen in the districts. I think that's, would be really helpful and important to the Board and our work.
Gordon?
So procedurally, if, and if people are that way, I feel like the, making an executive coach, having an executive coach for the superintendent is probably Board's direction to me as the negotiator, to say, this is something we want to see in the contract. And then the other thing is like directing the district to establish this, an equity coach for broader purposes.
That was what I'm going to, that was going to be my question, is that what should be in the contract and what shouldn't? So I think your suggestion is that executive coach go into the contract, and the equity coach be a direction from the Board for leadership, correct? Any other, any comment?
It was the direction, direction from the Board that we have equity coach, and that that person is for the superintendent and the cabinet.
Yeah, that's.
And that would be an ongoing thing, regardless of who's in that. I mean, maybe we could evaluate that annually, too, but basically, I would think that would be an ongoing thing.
I think it's not bad to build an evaluation as we go, because you want to change it and make it current if it's not, yeah. Other comments about that? Okay, you want to read it, and we can, again, with the suggested changes?
Yep. So I think it's like this. "We direct the superintendent to hire an executive coach or advisor who specializes in equity work and who will be available to work with the superintendent and each member of the Superintendent's Cabinet. The coach will provide feedback to the Board that will be incorporated into the Superintendent's evaluation and feedback to the superintendent that will be incorporated into the evaluation of cabinet-level staff. This plan will be reviewed annually by the Board." And then I think, as, I don't know if this is part of the motion or a separate motion or something else, that we want to say that the Board directs its representative in negotiating contract to make sure that there's an executive coach in the contract of the new superintendent.
Laurel?
Yeah, I like it. The part where we just have it with the superintendent picking their own executive coach. I, I just, I guess with, with Board approval, I guess, if we could add those words to it. That would, because, you know, picking your best friend to be your coach, what a sweet gig. Not saying that's going to happen, but I, we have, it's our responsibility to do checks and balances like that, so that's what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm going to suggest we just vote on them separately, because they are separate items and separate actions. I know it's cumbersome, but, so let's, the first one that you read, does everyone remember exactly what Gordon said to vote on it? Is anyone, what the motion reread? Okay. All those in favor of the?
Yeah, I do, with what I, with my amendment, yeah.
Great, okay.
But that's the second one, Laurel, right? That's about the executive coach?
Oh, that's second now?
Yeah, that's the second one. The first one is about the equity advisor for the superintendent and the cabinet.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of that one, raise your hand. Again, the motion passes unanimously, okay, with seven votes. Okay, you want to read the second one that goes in the contract?
Okay, the Board, this is what I have. "The Board directs its representative to include in the new superintendent's contract the provision of an executive coach to be selected jointly by the Board and the Superintendent."
Do we have a second? Okay, Gordon moved, Kirti seconds. Any discussion? More discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. It passes, that passes seven votes unanimously. Okay, now number three.
Okay. Here's the language, and maybe it should be changed. Here's the language, and maybe it should be changed, but we direct the superintendent to contract with an outside individual or organization to serve as an ombuds person that will be available to accept anonymous complaints from students, staff, or parents who have concerns about 4J practices but are afraid to attach their name to these concerns. Anonymous complaints cannot be the basis for personnel actions which must come through the district's complaint procedure. But the ombuds person may communicate concerns to the board and/or superintendent as subjects for possible discussion with individuals or changes in relevant practices or policies within the district.
Do we have a second? Thanks. Gordon moved and Maya seconded. Now any discussion about that? Questions? Laurel.
I'm excited about this. Um, we, I mean, as a parent in the district, um, you know, and having friends, there are so many of our complaints that just drop into a hole and just never really get addressed. The basically getting addressed means, yeah, no, we didn't, we're not gonna do anything. So to have an outside individual as part of this just raises the level of ethics and oversight to a level that we probably should have had a while ago. I'm, I'm excited about it because it's important and will only make us stronger as a district and, and will only make sure, you know, our kids are, are all being served. Nothing gets just slipped out of the way anymore, hopefully. So, thank you.
Kirti.
Um, I agree with what Laurel said, and the only thing I have is wording. I think we need to add either community member or something that doesn't just limit it to parents, students, staff, and teachers or whatever you've got in there. So I think it should be open to anyone in the community who wants to go through that process.
Any other comments or discussion about this? Okay, then, all those in favor of the, I don't, actually, does anyone want to have that reread? We're adding community member. That's the only change, correct?
Can, can we add policy on this one too? Future policy?
Any conversation about that?
Christine has her hand, Christine has her hand raised.
Oh, okay, great. Christine. I didn't see that. Didn't see her. Hi.
Hi. Um, I, I want to alert you that the vast majority of our personnel investigations and complaints do not arise from formal complaint procedures. My advice is to, they, they come through other channels and it's just not the primary mechanism at all by which we address personnel matters. My, my advice would be to make a motion to delete the, the words which must come through the district's complaint procedure from the statement that, that was made. Separately, what's written here relates to anonymous complaints and I, I think they're, I would be really reluctant to go beyond that for an ombudsman without study. We have complex complaint procedures already and legally required ones and they're overlapping and I, I really think it's something that I, I personally would recommend putting some thought and into the structure of that before, before hitting launch, because we've got all kinds of obligations and structures that are set up for people to file certain types of complaints. Certain types of complaints may only be filed with certain personnel, for example, a Title IX coordinator. Um, so it just is something I want to, I want to call out. I, I, I hear the conversation, but the conversation isn't matching the words that Gordon proposed.
Gordon, did you get Christine's suggestion?
Yes, so I, so um, what I now have is the inclusion of community members, the deletion, the, that sentence that Christine referred to now just says, anonymous complaints cannot be the basis for personnel actions and, and then deleted as she suggested and says at the end, the board will work toward making this policy. I assume that would involve also speaking with, you know, working with Christine on the issues that Christine just raised about how this would fit with all the other complaint procedures we have.
Was there another hand up a second ago? Laurel.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't want to take away some of the stuff because of what Christine said. Can we work on the policy part later? But agree that we're going to, to have this in our, you know, we're gonna vote on this. But um, I, I don't think that, I, I, I would like to get a second opinion on how, how this should look. Because the whole point of this is I think I'm looking at along the lines of the the police, what are they called? Auditor? No, that's not it. It's the outside, yeah. So having an, an independent, they don't get to make final decisions by any means, but they do inform decisions, informed decisions. And I think this will even be stronger because they'll be, instead of that program only informs the chief, the, this, our program will inform the board. Um, so I, I'd like this to be looked at um, pretty strongly, because I, I, I don't quite agree with everything Christine said and I want to make sure we have other opinions on that.
Gordon.
So, I mean, my understanding is that we are still intending to vote
Yeah.
on this language that includes saying we'll work toward making a policy. And when we get to the point of working towards make it policy is when we're gonna figure out all that legal stuff, um, including how it interacts with all the other complaint procedures, but that we are voting on this right now, that the only thing that was changed, that Christine has to be changed in this, is not saying that all personnel complaints have to go through the formal complaint procedure, because that's not true. They could go through the union grievance procedure or the Title IX procedure or something else, as, as I understand it. So that's the only part that got changed.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, because we, would you just reread it as it stands, Gordon, and let's vote on it?
We direct the superintendent to contract with an outside individual or organization to serve as an ombuds person that will be available to accept anonymous complaints from students, staff, parents, or community members who have concerns about 4J practices but are afraid to attach their name to these concerns. Anonymous complaints cannot be the basis for personnel actions. The ombuds person may communicate concerns to the board and/or superintendent as subjects for possible discussions with individuals or changes in relevant practices or policies within the district. The board will work toward making this policy.
Is there a second? Uh, we, we had a second, sorry. So I'm ready to vote on it. All those in favor, raise your hand. I see six votes for, all those opposed. One vote against. So the six votes for were Judy, Maya, Michelle, Laurel, Kirti, and Gordon. And Alicia voted, uh, no. So the motion passes.
Get my, I just, I appreciate it. I'm looking, this sounds like a good idea. I just don't know how we're paying for it. And I don't, I would have liked a little more discussion. So I support the concept. I'm just, I feel a little rushed on this because I didn't even get to see the written, because I was working this afternoon. I, I guess you must have sent the stuff. Uh, and I didn't get to see any of it. So this is a little more complicated. I would have liked to have had more time to delve in and make sure we're doing it to the best. And maybe if we now get to move to policy, we'll get to clean up some of that. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so now let's move to the, uh, next agenda item. Do we have a motion? Maya.
Uh, I move to appoint Dr. Andy Dye as superintendent, subject to the successful negotiation of a proposed contract. The proposed contract shall be in a form approved by the district's attorney and will be presented to the board for a future vote.
Do we have a second? So Maya's moved and Gordon seconded. My suggestion for discussion is getting, giving every board member a chance to speak on this before we vote. So who would like to go first? Laurel.
I would like to um, make a, ask a question about district attorney. I would like it to be like a attorney chosen by the board. So um, how do, how do we go about doing that? Because I, I think that's important.
Any suggestions for wording? Gordon.
Um, I, as long as it's legal, and I don't know if Christine needs to weigh in on that. If we could say everything as it is, but like, uh, an attorney for the district selected by the board. I mean, do everything else the same?
I don't, there was Christine. Thank you. Christine, you have, is that, would that work?
Um, my, my, my wondering is a couple of things. So we have established relationships with outside law firms. In fact, um, the negotiator's been working with our outside law firm, so I, I guess I have a practical question about is this, is the suggestion that the board use someone else? Because in fact, the district and this board or historical boards have had a relationship with this law firm for decades. I guess I'm also getting at, it's not, it isn't illegal, but going out and getting new counsel will certainly slow the process down. Um, we're really lucky to have an established relationship with outside counsel who is available. And you absolutely cannot count on immediate availability. And I, it just doesn't sound efficient either. So I'll let you guys talk, but there's, there's a way of going about it, certainly.
Uh, Maya has her hand up.
I'm just curious if our um, approved negotiator, or whatever the official title is, can, can give us an idea if we are um, close, far. Is, is this something that we are on the verge of wrapping up? Is this something that we're just getting started? I'd like to have an, an idea of that.
That'll be you, Gordon. Can you unmute?
I think we're pretty close to the end. There's still a, a couple of things that need to be worked out. And there, there might be something where counsel with different experience might be helpful, but I certainly, we're working on a tight timeline and I if what Christine is saying is that we're not gonna be able to get anybody on that timeline, then obviously the timeline is the most important thing at this point. So I, I think we're quite close.
Any other comments about the amendment? Laurel.
Uh, yes, I don't mind if it's the same law firm. Um, I, I would prefer a different lawyer. They're not, they're not all the same at that law firm. I had a lawyer from that law firm and she was great. She's now a judge. So I am asking for a different lawyer from that law firm.
Um, can we, could we leave that up to the person negotiating that if it's not working, or do you want him to? I, I mean, I, I'm not in those conversations, so. Gordon.
Um, I guess from my point of view, you know, there's a whole world of law and people specialize in different things. And what would be helpful from my point of view is if we came with to something where it would be helpful to get advice from somebody who had more experience in a particular thing that we were dealing with, it would be helpful to be able to do that.
I, I can agree to that. I, I like your suggestion, Judy.
Christine.
Yeah, and I, I mean, if you reach, if you reach that point, again, we, we've got established relationships and you know, if that became necessary, you can, I'm, I'm here to facilitate something.
Right, okay. So, can we proceed with that understanding, or do we need to change some words?
It should, it should say it's, it's not just chosen by district council. That, that are, that, I don't know what your title is in this, I guess, contract negotiator, negotiator can ask.
Gordon.
I, I wonder if it would be okay to keep what we have, but add on to it that basically like if the negotiator thinks it would be helpful to get additional advice, you know, from additional counsel, that that will be supported or permitted or something.
Getting some, okay, we got head nods. Okay, great. So, do we want to? Who would like to speak? I think Gordon, you had your hand up first, or Kirti? Kirti, oh, okay. Would someone like to, I, I think everyone might want to talk about the rec, the motion that's on the table. So um, was that Kirti's hand? Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just go first and get this over with. Um, I was hoping to give a vote for a strong external candidate without the history in Eugene. Someone who could bring a fresh outsider perspective and a needed culture overhaul. Nevertheless, I'll be working with the next superintendent towards driving positive growth and change for the community. So those are my couple of cents on here. And I'm looking forward to hearing from the rest of our board members.
Who else would like to speak next? Maya.
So um, I wrote something down just so I made sure to cover the points I wanted to make. I am excited by the prospect of Dr. Andy Dye serving as Eugene School District 4J's next superintendent. And I'm looking forward to 4J's future with optimism. Dr. Dye's experience, vision, values, and growth mindset all contribute to the board's decision to move to extend an offer to Dr. Dye to serve as superintendent. In the seemingly impossible long time the community has been waiting for tonight's meeting, we have conducted an extensive vetting process. Through that process, I have become confident in Dr. Dye's willingness and capacity to work with a broad range of stakeholders, to take swift corrective action to address the challenges our district faces, and to uplift the good work we have already begun. Dr. Dye has taken the lead or has been directly involved in many of our district's most important work over the last few years. And it is vital, we have someone in the position of superintendent who can hit the ground running to propel our already building momentum. I believe Dr. Dye is best positioned to help our district make progress on the administrative and operational goals we have set while maintaining an essential focus on ensuring equitable outcomes for all of the students and families 4J serves. Amongst others, for there are many, one of the communities which has been consistently underserved by 4J is our native community. I'm proud to be on the cusp of offering the position of superintendent to a native person for the first time in 4J history. I believe if he is to accept the offer, the lens through which Dr. Dye will approach this role will ultimately set our district up to best serve our community members who have been left behind for far too long. I look forward to having the opportunity to work with Dr. Dye to address important issues and together. and together move this district forward in a positive direction for all.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? Gordon?
I know the community's had a range of strong views on this. And the board, the board has had a range of strong and diverse views on this. And that's good. That's democracy. I know that, you know, whatever our views, we're all here to do as much as possible to strengthen and improve education for the students of the district. The last couple of months, I've seen some intense politics and disagreements and accusations flying in many directions. And I think we have to take those accusations seriously. And I hope that the, the things we just adopted are steps towards doing so. But we also face huge system-wide challenges for our students. We have to improve the mental health of students to counter the epidemic of anxiety, depression, and God forbid suicide. We have to improve the education we provide to students with IEPs and the coordination between special education and general education. We have to expand our career and technical education offerings to more fields of work and more students across the district. And we have to re-earn the trust of educators so that we don't keep losing good teachers at the rate we have been. The reason I'm thrilled with tonight's vote is that I believe Andy Dye is the leader who can do these things and that we have been waiting for so long and that so seriously impact all students district-wide. I'm looking forward to working with superintendent Dye and all of that. And I know that regardless of how anyone went into this or how anyone votes today, that everybody on the board will join in that work. I also want to take this opportunity to appreciate Superintendent Sidney Vanderkar, who stood up to take on the leadership of the district at a point when we were in need and who I believe did a great job of guiding us through the unprecedented crisis of COVID. Dr. Vanderkar is to thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll go in a moment. I'm not quite ready.
Okay.
Is it just me? Nobody else is talking?
No, I was, I'm, I was going to go last, but I does anyone else want to go while we're waiting for Laurel? Michelle, were you planning to make any comments tonight?
I'm not even in Eugene right now and
Okay, I just wondered. I just, I know you are.
Anything?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, since the, since you have to go last, Judy, I will respect that.
Only for a couple more meetings, Laurel.
Um, we know as a board that, that many have an opinion on who can be our next superintendent. Um, I know I have learned a lot this year in this role. And I, what I thought before I came into this role, oh, look, Alicia wants to go now. Funny. Um, what I thought before I came into this role and what I know now does not match. There's a lot that goes into this, but what I really know and what I'm excited about with Andy is that experience is important. And when people talk about experience, they mean the hard skills, the things which are also things that can be learned. What cannot be taught is more important. Our soft skills, including emotional intelligence, is, is always what I look for in leadership. Unfortunately, I'm usually disappointed. I do not know Andy well, but I have had a chance to talk to people who do know him well. And they talk about his communication ability, teamwork, his respect, his flexibility and creativity. And most importantly is critical thinking. I, those are the skills you cannot teach people. You cannot, they have to have it. So while I know he hasn't been a superintendent before, I know he has the ability to be a great leader. And I know we are setting him up for that success by creating and having accountability systems in place as this happens. So I'm excited. I think we've done our job well. And as, what I keep saying, what needs to happen in this district is what our culture needs to change profoundly. And I am working hard to be part of that change. What has gone on for the last 20 years has not been a, a culture of where we respect our educators and staff and hold them up and revere them. We say it, we perform this lovely performance, but our votes show something very different. I'm excited that we are voting in our first Native American superintendent. I think diversity, as many may have heard from me in the past, is very important. And I hope that shines in, in his role. We need to do some healing and I'm thinking this will happen now. And I'm excited for it, but also I'm ready to do the work to help support it. And I'm ready to hold people accountable if it doesn't happen. Because that's our job. And I've been doing my job all year and I'm ready to keep doing it. Thanks.
Alicia? You're muted. Alicia, you're muted.
I didn't know that. I really did think about what I wanted to say and if I wanted to say anything tonight. So here's what I did write down. The students are my top priority and there are many reasons for my vote tonight. But I want to focus on one area with my time I have this evening. I want to say to all the women who emailed us and wrote us letters, I hear you, I see you, and I'm sorry. I understand your fears of ongoing exclusion and sexism. And I understand your fears of retaliation. My hope is that you will not give up and that you will not leave the district. My hope is that you will stay and work with me and other board members who understand the harm and pain that sexism brings. Stay to make this a better district where all voices can be elevated, included, and most importantly, believed. Thank you.
Kirti, you have your hand up?
Um, I did. And this was just actually in response to Laurel in a positive way. I know you're excited about the new things coming in, but you said two things I just wanted to clarify. Said critical thinking skills can't be taught. We're in a school board that's to support teachers. There's a ton of teachers out there that would beg to differ with you. So I know and you're excited.
I would argue with them.
I, I know, I know. But I just wanted to say, I just wanted to clarify that I, for the teachers out there, I know what Laurel's getting at too, like on the innate abilities and whatnot. And I support her enthusiasm, but I, we, we support the development of the soft skills and the critical thinking skills that y'all are all working towards as well too. So I just wanted to address those.
Okay.
This isn't a student though, okay?
No, I get it.
I also thought very carefully, I would like to make some comments as well. So during this very challenging and long superintendent search process, I've listened closely and watched intently to understand what I believe our school district needs at this time. What I heard clearly from our staff, teachers, and community, and in the reflection shared by all four finalist candidates is that our 4J community needs time for healing and a culture that supports building trust. To do this, we need an experienced and strong leader who listens, has emotional intelligence, and is able to inspire and unite the 4J community. I've received calls and emails urging the board to slow down the process. Every, and the one, one very recent call from a teacher with a heartfelt plea to wait had a really dead, deep impact on me. I also studied the survey results and the comments from our 80-plus interview panelists and the survey responses from over 230 community members. And I read every single email, letter, and message we received regarding candidates. Based on what I heard from this feedback and what I strongly feel is needed at this time for the 4J community, I'm unable to vote yes for this candidate. I know that you, we would all prefer to have a unanimous vote on this important decision. But I'm making a very informed decision and must vote my conscience. If the board majority does approve this candidate as the next superintendent tonight, I will fully support the decision and do all that I can to help him be successful in his role of the, as a 4J superintendent. So I think it's time to vote. All those, Gordon?
Thanks. I just wanted to, I guess, reinforce the last thing that you said, that I know that obviously we have different views and we've been, and different views in the community and not, and not mildly different, but intensely different. But I believe that, you know, we all want the district to move forward in the way that we need to move forward and are all going to work with the new superintendent to make sure that that happens. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, so all those in for, in favor of doing the, finalizing a contract with Andy Dye as the next 4J superintendent, raise your hand. We have five votes, yes, Maya, Laurel, Michelle, and Gordon. All those opposed, raise your hand. We have three votes, no, Alicia, Judy, and Kirti. So the motion passes. And we have a new superintendent, Andy Dye. Congratulations. I know that there are some media here tonight and I know there's some things set up for tomorrow. It's late. So I am going to adjourn this meeting, special meeting of the Eugene School Board at 10:19.